As the Deputy Mayor of the Town of Edson, I call this committee of the whole meeting to order. May have a motion that the agenda for the June 11th, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted as presented. Uh, Councillor Schonard makes that motion?
Councillor Edson, I will move this for you, sir.
Alright. Any errors or omissions? All in favor? Passed. Alright, so we'll move on to adoption of the previous minutes. Can I have a motion at the minutes of the May 14th, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted as presented? Councillor Bevan makes that motion? Any errors or omissions? All in favor? Passed. We have a delegation from the Edson District Community Learning Society. Welcome. Can I just get you to introduce yourself and...
Yes, uh, my name's Raylene Young and I'm from the Edson District Community Learning Society.
Welcome.
So, I'm here to talk to you today about Settlement Services, which is something that we've just started, um, at the Learning Society in the Learning Center, which is located on the first floor or the main floor of the Provincial Building. So, just a little bit about us, in case, um, some of you may not know. Um, we've actually been in the community for over forty-five years and we gained a charity status in 2013. Um, we're just starting as a center for newcomers, but we've been doing community capacity building, um, as well as being an adult learning center and doing family literacy for a long time. We have an open door policy for help, so, um, there's usually three of us in the Learning Center, um, and people can just come in whenever they want and get help. Um, we're usually there from around ten to four, Monday to Thursday. So, our mission is to provide quality lifelong learning opportunities that are responsive to community needs and interests. Um, and our vision is learning expands possibilities and strengthens communities. And these two are kind of what we're all about and if you read them, it's really what we're based on. Okay, so, the Settlement Services, this is my main point today because we just started it, so we're trying to get the word out and, um, encourage people to use our services. Um, so we started this because we saw a need for it in the community. There's nobody else right now who's really doing this sort of thing. Um, and just having a place that's safe and newcomers can come get whatever help they need, we think that's a really good thing to have here. Um, and we offer help filling out forms, um, referrals, finding other services. We also do English classes and one-on-one tutoring. Um, and then we have a conversation circle where people can come and practice their English, um, and just meet new people. Um, this service is for, um, immigrants to Canada, um, new people to Alberta, but as well as just new people to Edson. Um, anybody who's just moving here and might be confused or need to find services, um, is always welcome. Okay, so how to contact us? Um, we are located in the Provincial Building, as I said. Um, we have a phone number, an email address, and we are on Facebook. Um, all this information is on our brochure, which I will leave with you today. It also has my card if you have any additional questions or comments. So, in conclusion, um, we think there's a real lack of awareness, um, of our services and even us in Edson. So, we just want you to help us spread the word, um, get it out there that if anybody needs help, there is help available to them. Um, and we wanna create a safe space for newcomers, give them somewhere they feel welcome, somewhere they can put down roots, um, encourage them to stay in Edson. We do see a lot of people coming in who might stay here for a while, but feel they aren't connected to the community and move on to somewhere else. Um, we're really trying to get rid of that. We, if they can put down roots, um, do community capacity building, volunteer, things like that. We really find that we retain them much better and it's a help to all of us. And that is it for my presentation. Um, just as a side note, we are looking for board members, if anyone is interested or you know of anyone who is interested.
Great, excellent, thank you very much.
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Councillor Bevan?
Uh, through the chair to Ms. Young. Um, have you guys talked to Welcome Wagon at all?
Uh, we have not. Um, we haven't connected with them. Um, just by looking at their mandate and ours, the services are quite different. Um, but it's definitely a connection opportunity for the future, I think.
Okay. And another question, um, uh, I'm on the Edson Library Board and sometimes, uh, the staff has spoke, uh, have spoken about, um, newcomers coming in and that being like kind of a safe place where they can gather information. Maybe that would be a good connection point.
Yeah, we've actually been working a lot with the library. Um, so, we think it's a really good opportunity for us to partner with them, just because a lot of our clients are their clients as well. So, just getting that double exposure is a help to both of us.
Okay, perfect.
Councillor Schonard?
Thanks for bringing your, uh, presentation, Settlement Services. You kind of started on it, so if I understand right, settlement is just meaning that you will help people when they newly settle into the community, is that correct?
Um, in a sense, yes, but also, um, we're willing to help anybody. So, if you've been here for ten years and you wanna know something about Edson that you didn't know before, we're here and we're willing to help. Um, basically, we wanna answer any questions that everybody has. So, if you are feeling lost in the community, even though you've lived here your whole life, um, you can come and ask us any questions you have, maybe get pointed in the direction of something you didn't know was there before. Um, we think it just opens up a lot of opportunities that might not have been there.
Let's expand on the same question. So, the settlement, if someone comes in and asking questions, then your office would help them? So, an example, they're looking for a home or something and they showed up here, then you would help them, maybe not financially, but you would help assist them to whatever question you would have to answer for them and then forms, numbers, et cetera?
Yes, absolutely, so we'd help with the forms, um, the numbers, any like math questions, stuff like that. And anything we cannot help with, we always make sure we refer them to somebody who can. So, we're never gonna leave somebody with a "sorry, we can't help you, please move on." Um, it's always "sorry, we can't help you, but here's somebody who can."
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Curry?
Thank you. Just with, to find out, your board, how often do you guys meet? Um, and what is the role of your board?
So, the board meets once a month and they are a governing board. Um, so they do create mandates for our Learning Society and they also deal a lot with our Executive Director. They work very closely together, um, on everyday, um, activities with the Learning Society, but also with bigger picture stuff, of course. Um, so our board does have a large role in our program.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, uh, thank you very much for your presentation. I really enjoyed it and you're certainly, uh, meeting your mission, uh, being responsive to the community needs. I find, uh, we have a lot of newcomers at Edson and I think that's wonderful, but they do need to be made to feel comfortable, which I feel they are. And now, through Councillor Bevan, did they not have a conversation group Wednesdays at the library in former years, just to practice English?
That was us.
They have, okay.
Yes, yes.
Right, and that's, and with Welcome Wagon, I used to do that. And they will take brochures to newcomers, uh, at no cost if it's for a nonprofit. So, maybe you'd be able to reach newcomers that way a bit too?
Yeah, absolutely.
Councillor Bevan suggested.
For sure, I'll look into that, yeah, that's great.
Mm-hmm. But thank you, really, this is wonderful that you are meeting the need that has arisen. Thank you.
There you go. Councillor Bevan?
Through the chair. Um, do you put any of your brochures down at the museum and that?
Yes.
Because we get a lot of people coming down there, just going through and, uh, picking up brochures from different places and that. And I'm also wondering about the, uh, Chamber of Commerce and that. I know we have a lot of, uh, people coming into town to work and that and, uh, are looking for, you know, they may not speak very good English and stuff like that, but they're always looking for, you know, a place to go to find out to, to learn and that. And maybe through the Chamber, they can, uh, put it out to the businesses saying that, you know, if you have new arrivals coming in, who work experience, whatever, is what we have to offer in our community.
Yeah, we've taken our brochures to the museum, as well as a lot of other places, and the Chamber is on our list, so we will be heading there.
Great. I'll just close up saying, I think this is a fantastic service, uh, available in our community and, um, I would just may, may recommend putting the brochures also in churches. I think, uh, churches is one of the first places immigrants stop in that when they come to a community, so, but...
Absolutely.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Councillor?
Um, what I was, where you said you're a non-profit organization, so if businesses wanted to donate to you, how would they go about doing that?
So, if they wanna go donate to us, they can contact our office and, um, we will do, work through the process with them, I guess. Um, and because we are a charity, we can provide receipts, um, for donations and of course, any donations are welcome because we are completely, um, grant-funded and donation-funded, so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any department reports, we'll move, uh, we'll move on to reports from staff, uh, Community Protective Services. And I guess, first up is Youth Council. And first off, the topic is Mayor for a Day Contest. The councillors, I'll just get you to introduce yourselves.
Okay. I'm Morgan Stuffler.
And I'm Danielle Bitner.
So, uh, as a council, we went through Mayor for a Day and we made a couple revisions, um, such as number ten on the, um, contest rules and information. We have changed it from it being grade seven to twelve to ages thirteen to eighteen. And I know at the last meeting at H R H on, or not the last meeting, but the one where we talked about this, uh, we talked about possibly having a deputy mayor and having a prize for second place. Um, but we've decided as a council that there will be no deputy mayor if that's okay. And, um, the prize will be split between the winner and the runner-up. Four hundred dollars going to the winner and then one hundred going to the runner-up, along with Edson Swag.
Alright, I'll open it up to, uh, questions and comments?
Uh, thank you ladies for your presentation and just for council's awareness. The reason why, uh, number ten was changed upon the discussion yesterday at Youth Council was, uh, for it to reflect, uh, the same sort of language that is used for selection of the Youth Council members. It's a, it's an age range, not a grade range, so, uh, just wanna be consistent there.
Councillor Curry?
Did you get rid of the deputy because of the performance of the deputy mayors?
No, we were thinking that, um, it'll, like, we've been thinking that it should be the mayor's special day, so he or she gets to go and experience it on their own. And then I feel like the deputy, or we felt like the deputy might hinder that.
Perfect, thank you.
Councillor Schonard?
Don't they want to be nice?
Yep.
Um, I'm noticing on there, like, for deputy mayor and our headline was "Town Mayor", meaning our Committee of the Whole Meeting. So, uh, probably for the legality, they could not chair a council meeting, but it's something that they would be possibility, they could chair a committee of the whole meeting and very soon, so we would have one of the young individuals up here teaching deputy mayor how to chair.
I think we decided that we weren't planning on letting them chair a meeting because we didn't wanna pressure them. Because chairs who have chaired Youth Council meetings have said that it's a very stressful position and we didn't wish to put the pressure on the mayor for a day.
It's a surprise.
Good answer.
Just further comment, we didn't wanna diminish any of the responsibilities of the current Youth Council, uh, so we wanted to keep their, their responsibilities at the same level they've always been at. Any other questions or concerns?
Through the chair, just really a comment, thank you and thank you for doing the extra work on Edson. We'll look forward to having our first mayor next year.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, fantastic, thank you very much. And our next presentation is on the plastic ban, or plastic bag ban proposal. The councillors, can I get you to introduce yourselves?
Okay, um, I'm Amy Wolfing from the Youth Council.
I'm Nicholas Hell from the Youth Council.
And I am Kieran Bradbury from the Youth Council as well.
Welcome.
Okay, so, this is the plastic bag ban presented by Youth Council of Edson. And, okay.
So, the basics of the ban. Our proposal includes the gradual elimination of plastic single-use bags over a debatable time period. This ban would include non-reusable plastic bags that are used in grocery stores and any organizations that use them. This ban would not include all single-use plastics, as some communities have chosen to do so. Suggested timeline, a few possible timelines. As discussed in the previous Youth Council meeting, a roughly nine-month advanced warning will be sent to the public and to any organizations in Edson. Any other timeline can be further debated on. A trial of six months with a public survey as a follow-up and information being presented after the six months on the effectiveness of the ban.
So, some plastic bag alternatives that we have are geotecian cloth bags, which are made of durable and naturally biodegradable vegetable fibers and they're like a burlap bag, kind of. Or canvas or calico bags made from organic cotton options. Um, reusable paper bags that can be used two or three times or the option of boxes such as the ones found at Costco grocery stores.
Okay, so what impacts do the bags have on the environment? So, right now, plastic bags are made from non-reusable resources. So, we have different chemicals getting added into these bags and they're just entering the atmosphere after they don't manage to get into the bag. And these chemicals include methane and ethylene, which destroy soils and there are possible plants to grow on top of them. Um, the plastic bags are also contaminating waterways. When picks them up, they float into the rivers, sinks in lakes, oceans, and they're impacting the aquatic life, such as sea turtles. They're also impacting local animals such as squirrels and stuff too. They're getting caught in them as well and they can't get out. So, uh, every day, plastic bags can take anywhere between ten to a, to a thousand years, almost a ten thousand, uh, years to biodegrade if they are not ingested by wildlife first. Production uses large amounts of oil to operate them. So, the majority of plastic bags are made from a few structural chains of the molecule polyethylene. Polyethylene is a chemical made from refined oil or cracked natural gas. The oil or gas is superheated and pressurized to isolate the pure polyethylene chains that combined form pure plastic. High temperatures will melt the plastic, which will then be pushed into a bubble by the outside air and onto a cooling process. After the cool process, the bag will be cut into desirable shapes and sizes and it's not a very environmentally plastic bag.
So, the footsteps that we would be following, one would be White Court, who had to start off the ban, they had people outside of grocery stores handing out, um, information pamphlets to bring out information to the public, which would be a really good idea for Edson, I think.
While four point eight percent of the population disagreed with the reduction and eventual ban of plastic bags, eighty-seven point four percent agreed with, with it, while seven point eight were undecided in White Court after the ban took place.
On top, the entire states and hugely populated cities have managed to implement plastic bag bans. California had their ban in place in August of twenty fourteen and New York has set a concrete date of March twentieth twenty for their ban to take effect.
So, some costs of converting, economically speaking, um, there would be possible job losses due to consumers not shopping at grocers who do not supply a convenient way of shopping and transporting their groceries. A study shown by the N C P A displays that there was a ten percent decrease in employment. Um, and recycling machinery repairs would also be a cost. Um, repairs would need to be done in the event that plastic bags get trapped in plastic-removing machinery. These costs have reached up to about one million dollars for the city of San Jose. And another cost, talking ecologically, um, paper bags require large amounts of fuel, water, and trees to produce. They are not usually made with recyclable material because of the newer paper having stronger fibers. Um, cloth bags are typically made from cotton and the production of that cotton requires a lot of fertilizer and a lot of water. The pesticides and fertilizer contain, um, nitrates and phosphates, which can be, which can enter waterways from runoff and it causes eutrophication, which is the aging of lakes that causes, um, L J blooms, shallow water, higher temperatures, and would eventually lead to those lakes drying up. And our sources, some questions?
Excellent, thank you very much. Uh, Councillor Curry?
Um, fantastic presentation, very informative of you guys. Um, my comment, just knowing, I sit on the Chamber, Edson Chamber Board, and the Chamber is looking at creating a subcommittee to start looking at this, um, from a business aspect too, because they are the ones that are the affected on whether they're ordering and what are they doing. So, is Youth Council willing to work with or sit on that board, um, that's up to me to work with them, to work with the business group, to work on this ban?
Um, I can't speak for all of the Youth Councilors, but I know a few of us would be willing to work further with this because I know a few of us are really passionate about this, so, I know we'd be willing.
Perfect, good to hear, thank you.
Councillor Schonard?
You guys make it hard for me to ask questions, you have a lot of details. I'm one of the eight percent that disagrees with the ban and the reason is for the... I totally agree that it caused an environmental thing, but we looked at the impact if you'd put a price tag on the bag. So, the individuals that don't want to be agreed with the ban, so right now you pay, I think, five cents at Walmart for a bag. If you put a deposit price on the bag, because I bought the recycled bags and I'm gonna closet pull them because I forget to bring them back. But your information is very good, very truthful. But had we considered, um, the bags themselves, if you put a deposit, same as a plastic bottle, uh, there would be a deposit, they could be burnt because right now we're burning coal or we're burning natural gas. If you take the same bag, it's hard to recycle because what's made out of it, but you could burn them in the incinerators to generate power, which we're, we're doing now. And with the paper bags, yes, I agree the fertilizer and stuff, but paper we used to use and I'm old enough to remember when. We need to have plastic because we're gonna, we're gonna end up using all the cheese-making paper bags. So, that's just my comment with your percentages, but good work, you have a lot of details. You have a very strong argument. I like the idea of you saying you're gonna do it over time, like you just don't want all of a sudden tomorrow. But that's one thing I would consider for the ban, by raising a price. So, if I show up at the store, I want a plastic bag, you charge me a dollar for the bag. You know, that would help on the other, but other than that, great work.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, Councillor Bevan?
Uh, through the chair to, uh, Youth Councilors. Um, thank you for the presentation and I really appreciated having the, um, alternatives to using plastic bags because, um, like Councillor Schonard said, uh, some people forget their, um, their reusable bags, but there are other options and, and of course, sometimes we have to be forced into change before we really remember them, uh, all the time. And as well as, I, I really like the idea of the follow-up, uh, six months after the ban is implemented. That way you can kinda gauge the public, uh, feedback because sometimes before, big changes, people don't like it and then after the change, sometimes maybe their opinion changed quicker than they thought it would, so, it's a good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Wilkinson?
I have a question to you, actually. Uh, the Regional Waste Management Society, are they putting any pressure on this? About five years ago, they really wanted to ban bags from Evansburg to Jasper?
Yep.
Is there any talk of that?
There is definitely talk of it, there's, um, varying opinions on depending on the community, so, we are definitely talking about it, but it's not, it's not at the stage of a proposal right now, so, councillor.
If I could, just to say thank you for your presentation and I think with the federal government just making some mandatory things, this day is going to come. As I say, in Fort McMurray, if they can go shopping with their bags and people all do, there's no reason we can't be doing that. But it's a lot more than just the plastic bags as well, so, we need producers to stop making so much garbage.
Mayor?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and to Councillor Wilkinson's point, I, I really agree that if you do something like this, it's really beneficial to have it from a regional perspective. Um, certainly, there's been discussion at, at the regional waste management, uh, level. Jasper actually just, uh, voted to do a ban in Jasper. Uh, with, they have had a lot of debate about that and not everybody's on board with it, but they're, they're moving forward with that. Um, and I think that, uh, the federal government announcement is certainly positive, but of course, we're gonna have a change in, likely have a change in government, uh, in the fall, maybe, maybe not. Um, and there's a lot we could do in the interim. Um, you know, I don't think that should stop us from, from making progress on this. This is a serious issue and I really, uh, appreciate Youth Council. This was something they actually brought up in their discussions, it was not something that we brought up. Um, and the work and the passion about this is, is awesome and, um, we did have the Recycling Society at Youth Council yesterday and, and there's positives and negatives to the bans. Uh, I think everybody around this table knows the real solution here is E P R and Effective Producer Responsibility. Um, so hopefully we see some movement on that. But, uh, looking forward to, uh, further discussions with Youth Council on this and the, uh, presentation the Recycling Society is doing next week, uh, at the museum and, uh, just wanna once again thank Youth Council for, uh, for bringing this up and, uh, for everybody here who made presentations today. Um, maybe we can also get the Youth Councilors that are in the back that didn't present to introduce themselves.
Excellent, good idea. Councillors, uh, can you introduce yourself if you haven't already done so?
I'm Ella Kraus.
I'm Mika George.
I'm Lauren Wonders.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Welcome, yep. Alright, any other questions or comments? Uh, great job, guys, I think, uh, for our fir- first Youth Council, you guys set the bar pretty high with this proposal. Um, and I, I think Councillor Curry's suggestion of working with the Chamber is perfect. Uh, and it, and it also allowed, even if you don't stay on Youth Council, you could probably continue to work with them on this issue, uh, uh, for the next year. So, excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, everyone is welcome to stay or you're free to go as well? Next up, we have Executive Office Milestones and Achievements.
What do you mean, Youth Council?
Hey!
Bye!
No, it's Danielle!
Thanks for coming, ladies and gentlemen. Danielle, good mistake.
Do not go to sleep.
Mr. Chairman, I'll allow Kayla to speak to the report if she originated it, so...
Okay, excellent.
Uh, it, I don't really have much to add outside of the report. Basically, we've just received requests for, um, different types of recognition for significant milestones, ninetieth birthdays, fiftieth wedding anniversaries, um... And never really had a specific guideline as to how to deal with them, so they've kind of been dealt with differently over the years. Um, so just having something concrete in place to follow, um, would be good.
Councillor Schonard?
Um, I'm actually pleased we're bringing this forward and you're a hundred percent right. In the past, we've had just automatically recognized, but there was loopholes because we did some and not others, like an example, grand, grand opening milestones. In two thousand eleven, when we celebrated the town's one-hundredth, we did recognition, so, I believe this is good and in that way, there is a guideline. Because I'm all for it, I agree it's not expensive, but I do believe that it's from the town, recognizing the fact of, of what you have in the report is very positive.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, I really like that we have this very much. So, particularly for the grand opening of a local business, if we can get some consistent gift. I did once suggest a picture of the business framed and different with them and they could put it on their wall. But the wedding anniversary, it's thirty years and every ten years after. Fifty maybe, to me, like, a lot of people celebrate thirty. It's just, this is gonna be work for somebody, for sure.
And then I'd have a chance for it, okay?
With the thirty? I'm twenty-one.
Any other? Mayor?
Uh, first of all, thank you Kayla for, uh, putting this together. There's, we've had a lot of discussion about what should be given, when it should be given, how it should be given. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to see this. Um, I don't think we get a lot of thirtieth anniversaries, but, um, more so on the fiftieth, uh, fiftieth side, but I think this, uh, really allows us to, uh, have a kind of a set policy in place and, and makes it a little bit more consistent, uh, moving forward. And, uh, I know with, uh, with birthdays and stuff, uh, our, our, our new intern designed, uh, some certificates and, uh, it looks fantastic and, uh, yeah, so, great work.
Councillor Bevan?
Mr. Chair? Kayla, yeah. I think this is great, we should have this. And I've been to several openings where the town has not given anything at all and, uh, the county has always given them something, even if it was a plaque or a picture or whatever and that. And even when we had opened, the reps all placed down at the bottom there, everybody gives something except for the town and even one of our local artists, Sonia, did a really nice picture up and, and give a presentation to them and stuff like that. And, uh, Edson didn't do anything. And even with Warehouses Thirty-Fifth, we've done that. The library Seventy-Fifth, we've done nothing, the county gave us. So, I think, we've always asked and the previous council we asked too, so I think it's a well, long overdue. We have to start, you know, showing our businesses and around with every care. We're hoping for business, we'd like them to come and, and we do support them and that and go forward from this and that, so, I think it's great, looking forward to see what, uh, Mike O'Leary has or whatever and that, for sure.
I have a question, there may be times when we know that something is coming up, we don't need to wait for a request from the public. Can we, can we initiate this process, like for instance, for Warehouser or... They might not want to toot their own horn. They might not want to toot their own horn, maybe we need to initiate it.
Mr. Chairman, council of course can initiate those types of motions and actions as they, as they choose, though only caution on that would be trying to express why you didn't remember or choose to express that for one that did not identify itself, and then that there's some potential there that you may have to reconsider.
Right. Counsel Shannard?
I would actually totally, I would probably partially agree with your comment, on the same token, if we advertise the fact that, you know, when a new business, so I mean, when we get development permits, so granted, you're a hundred percent right, we may skip an anniversary of, let's say, 50 years in business or something, and I mean, a lot of times, if we go 50 years, that's a big milestone, 50 and 100, but on a lot of times, if they should not come back on us and say, hey, you forgot me, because on the same token, if they were expecting one, they could maybe announce that they're having a 50th, so I think if we put the bar at 50, and up for anniversaries of any way, shape, or form, and then birthdays, like we've had individuals in our town turning 100 is a huge milestone, and we have some of that paperwork, if we go back to, I'm going back to 100th anniversary, we had put out a whole bunch of advertisements of people, their birthdays matching the towns, if they were a hundred, 100-year-old business, so if we set a bar of 50 starting, then a lot of times, through our own town staff and stuff, we've lived through business licenses, we may miss some, but like mentioned, like Warehouser 35th anniversary was like, oh my god, how did we miss that, they've been paying taxes to us for 35 years, so ones like that, we shouldn't miss, but a smaller mom cooperation, nothing against them, they make our town grow, we may not know how many years do people have been in business for, but if we can hit the big ones and put the bar advertised, the onus has gotta be taken.
Counsel Bear?
Through the chair to Administration, I'm comfortable with the, the dates or the years that you've chosen for the businesses and birthdays and anniversaries and grand openings, my, my comment is, with the, you know, the discussion around the table, when we're invited to a location as a councilperson, then I feel whether or not they have submitted a form, I, I would take that invitation as a submission that we are attending their, whatever that event is for them, and then maybe be able to have an item at that time, whether it's a plaque or a card, or, or a gift of some sort, depending on what the level of, what the, what the reason for attendance is in relation to this, does that make sense?
Administration?
Through the chair, to Counsel Byer, and a little bit Counsel Shannard, so, when we, we have received a few requests for the mayor to attend a grand opening, or the deputy mayor in, in his place, the mayor can't attend, and in that case, we would do like a gift, like, we usually send the mayor right now with a bouquet of, a nice bouquet of flowers and a little congratulations card, so I think we could qualify that as a, kind of as a notice, we're having this grand opening.
Okay.
But otherwise, like, yeah, I don't think our intention would ever be to comb through the business licenses and give, send gifts, no, it has to be, they have to contact us and request, you know, that the mayor attend their ribbon cutting ceremony, it has, they have to give a little bit.
Counsel Wilkinson?
Through the chair, I just think this really could be a collaborative effort, like, we as counselors, we're representing the community, if we hear things, just text Kayla and say, such and such is coming up, if we know it's a fact.
Counsel Currie?
I, I kinda disagree, I think, I think our responsibility is not necessarily to text Kayla, but to let the business know that we have this, and that they themselves can do it, I think that we have a lot of businesses, we have a lot of birthdays, we have a lot of anniversaries, and if, I, I think if it's important to the business owner, not every business owner, not every birthday, anniversary wants our recognition, they, not everyone thinks that's a priority or an importance, and I think for ones that do, so I think if, yes, we know that there is a 35, you know, business thing, you can say to someone in that business, hey, have you, you know, did you, are you doing your application, or is somebody in your business doing the application to get a plaque, you know, we'd like to recognize, and then it's on them, just because I do think it is about, we, we're then setting that precedent that, and A, because you're a big business, you're more important than a mall and posh shop, and I don't agree with that, so I just think that, I, I think the onus is that you need to do the application.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, just further to that point, you know, sometimes we get soft invites, so you get, you get your hard invite, come do scissor cutting, or do a presentation, we want you to be there, sometimes, just to let you know this is going on this day, I, and I think if somebody, if, for example, the Library 75th anniversary is coming up, it's more of a soft invite for everybody, as the library rep, for example, you can go to Kayla and say, hey, we're gonna be there, we would like to ensure we have a presentation, so I think, you know, I think there's some common sense that plays into the policy as well, or, you know, you may know that they're having, all of a sudden, you find out there's a barbecue next week, celebrating 50 years of such and such business, and you're, and you're planning on going there, I, I think that, you know, I think there's no, nothing, no harm with the counselor saying, hey, can we get a card and a bouquet of flowers, because I'm planning on attending, and on behalf of council, I wanna present this, if the mayor or the deputy mayor is not gonna be there, then the council members can do that, so, kind of my thought.
Just, back to my thought, we don't have like a thousand businesses in Edson, so I think the ones we have, we need to treat nicely, and, well, especially Main Street, I just walked down there, and there's a lot of empty places down there, so, I don't think a little extra plaque or a little extra recognition is gonna hurt.
Administration?
Mr. Chairman, I would just note that if, if, if there's a program that would take more than regular effort by staff, such as combing through businesses and, and reviewing that on a regular period to ensure providing the level of service anticipated by council, that does have a cost, the, the time of public servants does factor into what service we are being, being able to provide, so, on discussion, if, if that's how council chooses to go at that higher level of initiation for this, then it should be by resolution, and then we can accommodate, so.
Mayor Zehar?
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with anything like going through records and, and looking up stuff, but I think as things come up, you know, use some common sense, and if there's an opportunity, if it's a milestone, then for sure, council members can certainly request that.
Facebook's pretty good research.
Counsel Barry?
Yeah, I think, you know, if you check with the chamber too, because they have their awards night and that for businesses and everything else like that, they usually have a pretty good history on what businesses have been in the town a long time, and what their milestone is they're coming up to and adding, they have a, they go way back in time on a lot of this history on that, so you'd probably check with them when they're having something coming up with their business awards, you could maybe give something to them then, or whatever, or go down to whatever, and that, but I think they'd be a valuable asset, you know, to check it off and that.
Counsel Shannard?
I would agree, not extra time, but when we're doing the business renewals, at that time, I believe a lot of times, we can have the information right in front of us, so I would keep in common, we're not spending a lot of extra time, but during the renewal time, you know, there's, I'm not sure, do we have any idea how many business licenses are issued in Edson roughly?
Mr. Chairman, if, if it's, if please as counsel, Al Stram is here, and his department does manage the business licenses, perhaps he can provide some clarity on if we track the age or renewals that have been provided, or, or the number?
Sorry, Al, we're on the...
You're on the squad at Fort McMurray.
I'm the back for a reason. But you dress nicely, we need to see you.
Through the chair, and again, I'll counter my partner here a little bit as well, the administrative workload on the business license, basically, they send out the renewals, as far as tracking history, that's not part of the process, whether it can be done or not, we can explore that obviously, but it's not part of the current renewal process right now, we're more focused on making sure that administratively, we get that information out for businesses, we capture any new businesses, any businesses that are no longer there, those are some of the more bigger demands that we're facing right now, versus tracking how long they've been in business, so, it's kind of where we're at right now, not to say we can't explore more options, but I think there will be definitely a little bit more workable to do that.
Counsel Barry?
Through the chair to Administration, so, through the discussion, I, I'm still kind of firm on my comments earlier, I think that if we're invited to it, then we can give a, an award or a plaque or whatever is reasonable, I'll admit to myself personally, if someone gives me a plaque and I don't want it, it's going in the garbage, so if I don't invite myself out for that gift, then I, I don't want it, and I'm, I'm sure that everybody is different around the table about that, and the businesses that want something, maybe are a little more vocal, or have a grand opening sale, or whatever, and then they invite council to that sale, and then at that point, we provide a respectable gift for the, whatever the occasion is, so, thanks.
Administration, do you have enough to move forward?
I, I think so, I feel at this point, I would basic, with the adjustment of the wedding, basically move forward as it is, it, I really do think the onus is on the business community, or the council to make that business aware that this is out there, and if they want it, because I really agree with what Counsel Byer said, that some people just don't want it, and it just goes in the back corner and collects dust, or in the garbage, and it's just, it's more, I guess, an annoyance than it would be a positive for some people, and then, we don't wanna make that, we don't wanna create that, we don't wanna make that of this, but for some people, it is important, and then if they were aware of this, they would reach out and ask for it.
Counsel Currie?
Would it be easy then to just kinda cover what everyone is saying here, and submitting a request, would there be a way to just add an extra, like 1.4, with something related to council being able to bring forward, like, just because right now, the way this is, like, if we pass it like that, that soft, soft stuff isn't covered, so if that's important to people, then is there a way that we could put requests can be submitted through count, by council, or something along that, just an extra 100 to submitting a request?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I can answer, it's your policy, so if you add it to the policy, we can, or you want to see something like that coming forward, as, as council, we can definitely fabricate something that would accommodate that type of process, where council can initiate a submission on their own merit, so.
Does anyone have an issue with adding that clause?
There's too much, yes.
All right, please proceed.
I would just say it has to be a milestone, just.
Yeah, yeah, I think everything else still fine.
Yeah.
Do you have enough? Excellent, thank you very much, move on to Regional Economic Development Alliance, Rita update.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Rest of Council, um, oh, there we go. No, of course not. Give me just a second here, okay, so Administration did send a letter to Community Futures West Yellowhead, asking the role of the organization, their mandate, and whether they would be able to fulfill the role of a Regional Economic Development Alliance, Community Futures West Yellowhead did reply, saying that that was not in their mandate or budget for the current year, and that we could bring it forward at the next organizational meeting in December, so, that's where we stand right now, Nancy Robbins, the general manager of Community Futures West Yellowhead, has graced us with her presence this evening, and has prepared a short presentation.
Excellent, thank you.
Is there further ado? Hand it over.
Thanks, hello, everybody, so I, the letter is included in the package, and I just wanted to make sure that we could go over the details, and I would like to answer any questions that you may have, and discuss the issue further, so as you know, Community Futures West Yellowhead serves the West Yellowhead region, we are a nonprofit corporation under section nine of the Business Companies Act, we are owned by the five municipalities which we serve, so Edson, the town of Edson owns 20% of Community Futures West Yellowhead, and each year at your organizational meeting, you appoint two directors, or two counselors to sit on our board, and so currently, Counsel Currie and Counsel Bevan are sitting on the Board of Directors, usually, we do not ask for financing from our member municipalities, we do, however, on occasion, may come to you and talk to you about a special project we may be doing, or is that something that needs funding, but we do not count on operational funds, we consider the appointment of two counselors a very big contribution to our organization, so, just to talk a little bit about our strategic plan, our strategic plan is for a four-year period, and we do review it once a year, and usually in early December, we have a retreat, we go over it, we measure on whether it's still relevant, these goals really align with what is happening in the economic situation in the West Yellowhead region, and our board works to identify areas where we see a lot of tremendous growth, so we have tourism entrepreneurship, agriculture enforcement, production, youth entrepreneurship, and alternative energy initiatives and new technologies as priorities where we like to focus in the region, so we have done work in all these areas, as you may be aware, we have support Albert Open Farm Days every year, we're heading into our third year for that project, also, we have a Yellowhead Food Initiative, we work on the county with that project, youth entrepreneurship is quite big this year, we are doing Lemonade Day in Jasper and Hinton, which is June 22nd, and we're hoping to bring that to Edson next year, and also, we've done a lot of energy work in the Hinton area in the past fiscal year, because of the geothermal movement and the work towards geothermal in that region, so in the next year, we're really hoping to do a lot of work on tourism entrepreneurship, and I'll be working with your administration on that project and how that will look, because we're hoping to look at businesses outside the National Park, and how they are working to support tourism in the area. Core Services is really what we're all about, we do business coaching, business training, business financing, and community economic development, our vision is to grow communities one idea at a time, and the mission statement, as designed by the board, is strengthening and diversifying our regional economy by supporting entrepreneurs through financing and programming, and that's really is what we're all about, we give people loans, we coach them through the business process, we hope that they're successful, and do everything in our power to make sure they're successful, and also work with them to find different ways that they can continue to maintain their business, and while we do that, we do community economic development, so we do a number of projects in the region that really help to grow the economy, and to work on what we really need to get done, to make the West Yellowhead successful, and of course, we're funded by the Government of Canada, they recognize some priorities which they wish us to address, and they are in two main areas right now, the first one being inclusiveness, we are asked to work more with indigenous peoples, women, people with disabilities, and youth, and cluster development in the area of clean technology, clean resources, digital technology, advanced manufacturing, value-added agriculture, and health and biosciences, so we try to make sure that we're looking at ways that we're inclusive in all the work that we do, we try to include as many people and be as diverse as possible, and also, we try to support as many businesses as we can in the West Yellowhead that are doing things that are outside the norm, and that's where we work in cluster development, so, that is my pitch. I'm really here to answer your questions, I do know that there's been many conversations about a Rita, and I, I think it's very important to realize that our role at Community Futures West Yellowhead is we just support the work that everybody does in economic development, and even though the role of a Rita is not necessarily our role, it's not a role, it's a role that we would definitely support, and we would wanna help the town of Edson, if that's what they desire as much as possible, so.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for making the trip out and your presentation, I think Community Futures does a lot of great work within the community, especially supporting small business and getting a lot of businesses started, I wasn't here when we had the discussion about the Rita, unfortunately, but, you know, I think the vision of the Rita is more higher level strategic goals, and it was, the idea behind the Rita too, is to include municipalities that are not involved in West Yellowhead, Community Futures, to form partnerships with communities such as White Court and Drayton Valley, which have very similar industries as us, as well as Hinton, so, White Court currently is not in a Rita, we're not in a Rita, Drayton isn't, so that's where the whole discussion came from the Regional Mayor's group, on, on how we can work together to support one another, that doesn't mean that Community Futures can't be involved, or shouldn't be involved, I think they have a really important role in that, but it's really to, to work on some higher level strategy and thoughts around attracting business to our region and tourism into our region, we have a number of similar industries, and we are working on a number of similar type projects, whether it's bike parks and that sort of thing, so how we can coordinate and support one another moving forward, and there might be some opportunities through, through the provincial government to get funding if we wanna get a Rita started, because we are currently the only region in the province without a Rita, so, so, and it's something that I know the town of White Court is really interested in. So, and it's something that I know the town of Whitecourt is really interested in pursuing.
Councillor Shinnard.
Thank you for having us here.
It's always an enjoyable trip driving to Edson.
It is.
It is. It's got the nice scenery. I understand the importance of Rita, but this will be through administration. We're getting involved. Do we know what the cost would be if, you know, for involving you or we have a rap? Does anyone know what would cost us to join Rita? And since everyone except, everyone in the province except this area doesn't have it, so what would the cost be? See the value, but at what cost?
I don't have that information, Martino.
You're under pressure.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Basically, what we need is direction from council to pursue this with our regional partners. And that would be the work that would be undertaken to see if we can pursue grants to form a Rita, whether that be for staffing or for studies or for that sort of thing. One of the key things is that if we do a study or we do some work on that, we don't want it sitting on a shelf. We want to be able to implement it. We don't want it the same, we've been through this process before. We want to take a fresh approach and ensure that whatever we do is actually providing results to the municipalities. And we would obviously be willing to work with Community Futures on that.
Councillor Curry.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and just clarifying and the way that the roles could work together. My main reason for bringing it up, and that is just to make sure that we're using our resources efficiently and not underutilizing or overutilizing and fully aware of what we have available. So thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Through the chair. First off, Nancy, I'd like to thank you for coming out today. But I'd also like to thank you for all the work you've done in surveying our businesses at least twice to find out data for us. We really appreciate it. And do you go and seek people to start tourism businesses or they come to you?
We do not actively go out and find people to start businesses. We wait for them to come with us for an idea. I think it's an important piece of what we need to do over the next six to eight months with regards to tourism is to actually find out what businesses we have working in that sector. Because we don't think we're really clear outside the national park what people are actually doing in the tourism sector and where the gaps are. We know in our region where all the assets are. We know, we've had that very well mapped through the Alberta Northern Rockies Tourism Alliance work. So we have that work. So what we would like to do is build on that and find out which assets are actually being used by businesses and what needs to be done. And if, once we establish that and find out who's working and working in the tourism industry, especially like in this area, then we can start looking at what the gaps are and figuring out what needs, we need, businesses we need to help create and what we need to do to make the most out of those assets.
Well, Karen suggested to me a train out to Cataman, just like the train in Stadler. And you could find somebody, well, obviously, there, an indigenous woman with a disability with a youth partner.
That can also drive. That can also drive trains in a male-dominated profession. That is run by solar power.
That would just be such an asset to the town with all the tourists coming to it and using it.
But seriously, we seriously, we need to know first what people are actually doing so that we can promote those businesses. And that's the first step. And once we find out what we don't have, then we need to make sure it happens.
And I trust you'll do all that because you have.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Martino.
And Mr. Chairman, members of council, just as a note as well, if we did proceed with looking at a Rita, my understanding from Nancy and our previous conversations, our roles would not necessarily overlap. We would complement. The goal would be to complement each other and do things that they, as Community Futures, are not necessarily within a mandate to do. So most Rita's, if we look at some of the successful ones, such as Jedi around, I believe it is Wataaslan and Camrose, you know, they perform less of the business support piece that's done by Community Futures. And they do more of tourism marketing, reviewing municipal bylaws to determine if there's alignments or work that could be done to make sure that you can attract more business. They actually do look at bringing in different key businesses or marketing the region. They perform in many ways a very different function. So that's just note that it is a different investment and, but yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Wilson.
Through the chair to Nancy and Carrie. Thank you for the presentation and the clarity on the Rita's and the Community Futures and where we stand. So how are we, how are, how is Community Futures doing on the current priorities that you have on the board?
Really well, actually. We have a very active Entrepreneurs with Disabilities program. We have a youth program. We do a lot of education with kids. So like yesterday, for example, I was at the high school here in Hinton, or in Edson, sorry. I get all the high school names mixed up. Parkland, thank you. And we went over Adulting 101. It was a learn how to money course. And we talked about budgeting. And for example, so I did, talked about how to open a bank account and how to save your money and what it meant to file your taxes, which was actually horrifying for teenagers. And then we did a budget exercise where I gave them scenarios. I gave them a job, I gave them education levels, and then I gave them their family structure. And then they had to figure out a monthly budget based on that. And then once they figured out the monthly budget, I was really kind and then gave them a problem that they had to solve. So it was a lot of fun. I really enjoyed myself. It was in the comm class and we're hoping to do more of that in the fall. We have a great program called Head Start, which is very curriculum-based that we hope to bring into the schools in the region. And you know, so it's, the youth programming is fun. It's a lot of fun. Women, we had a very successful women's conference last year. And we're hoping to bring a women's entrepreneurship program to the region, but that's in the works. And indigenous relationships are always hard. And so we're just constantly working on them. And usually, that's where we work with clients one-on-one in that area. The cluster development's a little bit harder. So we try to look at that in supporting individual businesses. So for example, if we have a business that's really into digital technology, we try to refer them and get them as many resources as possible because they need a lot of help, because there's not a lot of people that are doing that. So we try to bring in and get them as much as help as possible. And some of it's easy. The value-added agriculture is very easy in the county when we have so many people producing products, so. These are a lot easier priorities. The previous government, they were a lot more challenging. We had things like federal defense procurement and things that were difficult to even consider. So these priorities are a lot, work a lot better with the West Yellowhead region.
Councillor Bevan.
Through the chair. Thank you, Nancy. Being on this board for a while, I really appreciate the work that all our municipalities do and yourself and Tim and that. And I know you said you don't go out and try to find businesses to work with. They come to you. We have Tim that's down here at the Chamber and that. He's always there one day a week, I believe. And if you know of any businesses that want to start up and they can't really, you know, get a funding or whatever, go down, see Tim. He'll bring you in. He'll do the coaching. He'll get the money for you. He'll pass off to Nancy. He has done a lot like that and they do everything in that. And there's a lot of businesses in all our communities that have, you know, started up and some have gone under like they do with the banks anyway and that. But most of them are thriving in that and they're looking to either add or grow or whatever in that. So Community Futures does everything like that and it's a very good organization to go to.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me know when you need me.
All the time.
All right. Next up, Corporate Services, we have information or update on the landfill condition.
I didn't get it clarified.
Okay.
Thanks, Nancy.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bruce was unable to attend today, so I'll be providing the report on behalf of the Environmental and Fleet Services. We wanted to update council, since it's been a little while, with regards to the landfill recovery operation. We've been looking at the site. We've had new monitors in place and sent those results off to our fire specialists. The good news is, is that their assessment of that was initially very favorable. I, in fact, just got a draft of the report that states that they would consider the fire to be extinguished based on the evidence we have. So we've been successful in addressing this rather aggressively and now ending it promptly. However, we do feel it's responsible that we continue monitoring just to confirm that information and stay ready. But otherwise, it looks like our approach has addressed the issue. And that does open up some additional opportunities for us in looking at our new cell development as well to reestablish service. So in looking at the new cell, there was complications with going with our previous plan and expanding to the south due to changes within the wetlands policy. So the suggestion that we've fronted and we've been meeting with some success with Alberta Environment was to look at a vertical expansion north of the site within our current footprint and within our current remediation plan and well system for groundwater. We've gotten favorable test results from the GeoTech on that. So we will be consulting with Alberta Environment here in July and hopefully seeing them proceed more quickly than slowly. That said, we are hoping to bring you an update following confirmation on the fire and seeing that those numbers are staying solid or getting lower again on the carbon monoxide, getting some progress or an indication of timeline from Alberta Environment. And so you'll probably expect to see a good update coming either end of July or in August. With that, the only other thing we will say is outside of standard operating procedure is that we're still operating the transfer site. It does require more staff time to manage the bins. And we do have issues, our own set of issues that we're dealing with there. However, it's been relatively successful. And whenever we have this kind of push forward and we have several months of data, we can also update you on if there's any additional costs or losses of funds that we would typically receive profits from taking in more waste from that operation. So we can get an idea kind of mid-year about what the impact of this event was and how we see it going forward. So with that, do you, does, are there any questions?
Councillor Wilkinson.
Through the chair. I think it's a rhetorical question, but there will be no town cleanup this year then? It's cancelled almost indefinitely.
Mr. Chairman, it's a program that we've usually done within our current level of service. If council would like us to, we can proceed with that. However, there is an additional cost for transferring it to Hinton. And so I'm not concerned about the use of our staff resources as it's typically something we've undertaken. It is the issue of tipping and transportation. So if council would like us to do that, we are able to bring that forward for consideration of a resolution and we can action that upon an appropriate timeframe.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Can I just summarize what, I think I heard you say, we're going to, we're looking at options now to build higher vertical space rather than grow new cells. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. If you look at our current site on our webpage, you'll find air photos on our mapping. North of the current working cell is an older area that's within our license. And so what we're looking at doing is either building up on that cell that was previously approved and just having a clear earthen barrier between that older landfill and the new dry cluster landfill. If our results of the fire extinguishment come back quite favorably and start to hold in that pattern, we might also slightly modify our approach and then instead look at actually just building right off of our existing landfill cell straight over, because that does gain us quite a bit of efficiency. But that, of course, is up to the regulator to decide whether our plan can be approved in that way.
Councillor Wilson.
Through the chair, Martino. How much land do we have out there in total and what would, when would you run out of land if you keep going?
Mr. Chairman, through the councillor Bevan. That's a bit more of a complicated question than it should be. We actually have, I think, close to a half section or at least, yeah, close to a half section in that area. Unfortunately, though, not all of it has the appropriate work. It's not necessarily all useful to us for a landfill. So if we look at the area to the east, it's actually under agricultural production right now as a holding use. It's not as favorable for use as our current site. So there's lots of efficiencies with trying to expand in our current area, which is also standard best management practices within the landfill to move in certain areas rather than spreading it out too far. To the west, though, is, there's some oil and gas interests. Again, we're running into both to the west and south of the current cell, which we do own, wetlands issues, because in 2015, the wetlands policy included the green zone, which is us. And so Muskeg is considered a wetland, just like any other open pond. It just has a different assessment by the government. So it's not that we can't, it's that it will take quite a while. That was one of our, one of our approaches to moving back into our existing footprint was because wetlands assessment can only be done during a certain period of the year. And then they, which can delay you till you get that study done. And then they can take several months, more than a year in some cases, to get back from the province, which would then allow us to proceed with the applications. And establishing level of service was tried, was our, was our primary approach, so.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much for that update.
Thank you.
No items of sundry. Any questions from the media and public regarding items from this committee, the whole meeting?
Actually, I have a question about mayor for a day. I'm not sure if you can answer it or if it's answered.
Please proceed, yeah.
But I'm just wondering what the job will tell as mayor for a day? Like if it's sitting on committee or if it's like looking at implementing their proposed initiative?
That's right. So I'll take a stab at this. When they are submitting their application for mayor of the day, they come up with a big idea that they would like to do and there's, they put together a little budget for it. And it may not all be done within one day, but they'll probably initiate it that day. And then they'll also go with the mayor to various events and ribbon cutting or any events that the mayor might have that day, so.
And the intention is to like take the youth tour of the fire hall and do some cool things and show them some town operations and give them some tours and give them a feel for what happens within the town of Edson. So depending on the day and what's happening that day, so.
Oh, yeah, that was all I had.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right. Moving on to a closed meeting session. May I have a motion that council move into a closed session to discuss the code of arms in accordance with section 161A and 251 of the Foye Act? Councillor Bayer makes that motion. All in favor? We are now in a closed. Very good. All right. May I have a motion for adjournment? Councillor Shinnard. Non-debatable, all in favor? Passed. Thank you very much.